Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, Linda, you're good there. Declarations of conflict of interest. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions?
All right. Bump outs.
A, B, so we're gonna put that under 5B. Bump outs. You're good?
Yeah.
Did you have anything there? No? Oh, it doesn't. Or good. Approval of agenda with the additions and with the addition.
Seconded.
Okay, moved by everybody and seconded by everybody. All right, the ferry readiness, and it's as simple as this, I don't know how this how this turned into a big deal, but the simple thing was that in two and a half months, we have a ferry coming in, and the question is basically, as a town, is there anything on our radar that we need to be looking at to get ready? And we need to start doing it now, as opposed to maybe the middle of of April. So, go ahead there, councillor. Well, no, can't do. Just a second. Jeff's the only one can fix this for me.
No, Jeff's the only one.
Chairman has surrendered to Jeff.
Sixteen months, I've tried every month. I can't fix this.
Okay, stop it, end it, step right there. End it all in first.
Okay, okay.
Sticky over for you.
Yeah, you can. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. My only comment would be is that the downtown is not nice. Drove by there the other several times, as we all have. We do have still our empty storefronts, and they seem to be growing. And I'm not sure what the solution is. I know we've discussed it several times around the table about ways that we can possibly bring our landlords on board somehow with the downtown core. The the issue is that when people get off that boat, as much as I would hate to say it, I'd rather them go along Water Street than Main Street for the view. At least they'll see something. Main Street, we've got to really look at serious. I put an item on the agenda for the possibility of some bump outs, and we've talked about that in Communities in Bloom. But we really have got to sit down and proactively look at how we can put on a better face along Main Street. People will come off that boat, they will either go straight on Forest Street, as some will do, or they will turn left to go along Main to Stars. In past experience, the bulk of them seem to go left along Main to Stars, so we kind of want to make that visual presence a little stronger. I think there's several things we can do, but I think what's important is to get the various building landowners on board to see what they what they see as vision. I can't imagine any property owner wanting to leave their properties in the state that they're in in some cases. Some of them are bordering on on Saltly. I mean, even if we could even start to highlight some of the attractions, we have, Worship, you and I chatted earlier this week about some possibilities of ways that we could possibly work with some of our events in the community, or some of our sites in the community, even to highlight them in the windows. And I don't mean just slapping some pictures on, I mean some nice tastefully artistically done displays that look professional. So, that's my only comment. I know there are others councillors who probably have sentiments as well.
Okay, so so I can tell you a couple of the things. I'll run down the list quickly, just so we're aware of some of these. It's just from the all-hands meetings and and all that's out of the community. So, we've got the Adopt a Street. Most of these are gonna have to work in conjunction with Communities in Bloom and different the different organizations that are already set up, so that nobody's duplicating. So, we've we've got the the street cleanup team, which I think that's April, somewhere in April for a whole week, so that'll be, yeah, and we'll just make sure that that everything is everything's done there. We've got on on the list too, Mike Mooney's, the annual celebration of the Nova Star, so they're they're working really hard at at some things just to invite the community and and the visitors in. Angela Collier's doing an art walk, that's not for beautification though. The swivel gun team's on the way. The the children's playground is gonna have, I say, a face makeover, but but Diana Adams is looking after that to keep that clean down there, along with there's there's a Yarmouth South group to keep from that that end down there looked after. We have somebody looking after downtown attractiveness, who is going to call you, Natalie. So, Communities in Bloom, the Garden Club, we've got a flag team, we've got a team that wants to do some painting, some weeding, some cleaning, all those, put everybody together and and make everything kind of happen. Do you want to comment on that now while we're talking?
Well, I just, if you don't mind me commenting, your Worship, one thing that we should be looking at, and where you do have a bevy of volunteers, and this is for the CAO as well, we have down in the basement, all those banners from the 250th. When the 250th was done, we designed generic banners that could be reused. The lettering on the banners, if Jeff will recall, we specified that we wanted the lettering temporary, so with a hairdryer, you can pop the letters off. So, we would have that generic background, and the town invested a fair chunk of change in those banners. We also have the standards for those banners. Basically, what we need is some volunteers to strip off those letters, and then, once those letters are stripped off, it'd be a matter of L and N or somebody putting new letters on to advertise some of those events. I was looking at the banners about four or five months ago, and they looked in pretty good shape. I don't know, maybe Jeff may have more of an update on that, but I know there's a fair chunk of them down there, and they're in good shape for the most part.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. I was given an update last week from the signage committee under the Waterfront Development Corporation. They've established a signage committee to do the wayfinding, and what I was shown was that they've adopted the color scheme and design from those banners for the signs, and they're intending to do exactly what you just described, is to incorporate as many of those banners as as are reusable and the standards into that whole that whole initiative.
So, you're right, we've got the volunteers when that happens. Yeah.
A little bit of creativity, and they really made Main Street really, really gussy.
Okay.
We had, yeah.
Yeah. We've we've still got like the Main Street Cleanup Team, the Flag Committee, the Modified Houses Will Be App, go ahead.
Hate to butt in again. I mentioned too, and again for your information, I had a discussion with Angela Collier. The Art Gallery in Nova Scotia has posts there for two huge banners on the outside of the building. Do you know if they're doing anything with those posts? I know those posts were designed for the Art Gallery, I don't know, at one point, if I remembered, again, the CAO can correct me in here, I somehow remember them coming to council looking for money at one point, number of $800 a banner rings a bell in my mind, maybe Phil, you'll remember that. Around, it was around $800, but that's that would be, I mean, even to highlight that as an attraction, as a possibility, I'm just throwing that out, your Worship, since we're talking about it, because that is actually center of our town, and also has two really outstanding positions there, so just to throw that out.
So, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna comment, that did come up in my discussion last week about signage. I think they had an issue there with the with the banners they had gotten tearing from the from the wind, so I know it's part of the discussion, I don't know if they will be replacing something there, but it is a nice location.
So, so they are doing something?
I don't know.
It's on my list anyway, so I'll I'll figure out. Aesthetics wise, the Community Improvement Group, you're doing that, Sandy, so like the Collins Street and everything will be all cleaned up. Main Street Cleanup, Flag Committee, Modifieds Events Calendar, but we've got a paints team, there's your signage and wayfinding. The the wall murals team as well, although that won't probably won't be ready for when the ship comes right away, but Phil, go ahead.
I noticed earlier, your Worship, and thank you, you're talking about weeds and cleanup. I think some of them along Water Street and going up Forest Street are more in need of, I think, Steve Deviller or Garth Barry.
Yeah.
They need some, I think, pressure washing to be to blast them out.
Yeah.
I don't think to get a hoe and a, you know, little pick and go at them, I think it's a bigger job than that.
Yeah.
And I noticed especially along Water Street, and they're gonna be using that street a lot, walking up and down it, and then using the hill on Forest Street.
Yeah.
Those should probably professionally cleaned, and I don't know if we need a, that goes through Waterfront Development, Jeff, or does that go, how does that work? That should be done sometime in April, I would think.
For that play on, I remember Steve did, Steve did in front of Tim Hortons or something like.
About six hours in front of, in front of Tim Hortons.
I know, I know, for like a half a block or something like that, but I did get, I did get a business donate some money, a few hundred dollars, like for another really bad patch on Main Street, and then we'll have to see where the.
If you want areas done.
Yeah, go ahead. It's all right, Ken.
No, if we if we want areas done, and, you know, not done by volunteers, but done by town resources, then it should go to Operational Services.
We'll put that maybe next minute in the hall?
Sounds good.
I was thinking too, Pam, what about possibility of yourself or somebody, but yourself would be the best yourself to do, contacting Irving and asking them about those tanks? I mean, that's the first thing you're gonna see when you come into the town of Yarmouth, there're gonna be those tanks on that boat.
Okay.
And I'm thinking it would be natural to put, welcome to Nova Scotia, welcome to Canada, I don't care what Irving has for a message there, I know it's in the municipality, but if we could put something on those tanks that the people on the boat would see coming in, I think that'd be really striking. The tanks need work anyway, and it may be a possibility, maybe it's on your radar already, Pam, I'm not sure, but you may want to look at that too.
It was on my radar to paint them, and then I got, we're gonna be $100,000. Well, it's not $100,000 for the paint, it's the the staging and and everything like that, so don't be quoting that number. Don't quote that number, but but that's, yeah, yeah, exactly, but but it's a really high cost because of staging, everything to paint it. The other thing, I'll look into it, but somebody said to me the other day, was it Boston? It might have been Boston, but they got something to wrap, like a big, something wrapped around them, and it and it was much more economically feasible. Still gotta get up there, and and Eric, you need to stop doing that.
But it would be nice if you stopped.
Yes, oh, definitely.
And it's probably something Irving's having to consider or look at, but it's, I mean, all these.
You know, I'm looking at it from a media point of view, it's good advertising for Irving Gas. I mean, these people are coming over on the boat, I mean, we're using the 100,000 figures, there's gonna be cars. To me, it's like an indirect advertising thing for their product, and they may want to grab it, you know, as a as a thought, you know. 100,000, although to us is a fair chunk of change, to Irving in commercial advertising, and they're gonna have to do those tanks anyway, I mean, it's one of those things, so they may want to look at it.
Okay, so that's that's basically what's on on my list, as far as, I I really think as far as making it look nice, and it's not gonna happen the first of May, because flowers aren't exactly out then, but otherwise, clean, tidy. Excuse me. I did have somebody take photos, they left the ferry terminal, drove up and took photos of everything they thought needed a little bit of doing, and I'm on it with the landlords. I I will we'll just have a conversation with the ones that that are willing to have that conversation and see what we can put together, and because it's, we need to do it as a town, it's not gonna work one here and one there. Sandy?
I just have a couple of questions that people have been asking me. Are we going to have a bagpiper to welcome the people off the boat? That's one. And some people are wondering about the plan, if the boat comes and the terminal's not ready, and I think maybe that you could answer that for everyone.
I would say, Jeff could probably answer better, but I would say that if the, as in the ferry, the terminal's not built, I would say we'd know that, and then it would be a matter of of just having a trailer or something that gets them through customs. It's it's really that simple, but but you'll continue to, you'll continue to say that, and they'll they'll still ask again. And we don't need the harbor dredged, that I know of. Anyway, that was the next question, probably. Yeah.
So, councillor Mooney had asked about the Blue Nose maybe leading the Nova Star into the harbor.
Is it in water yet?
I, no, but it's somewhere else. Let me ask that again, I thought there was an email. Yeah, it's not available, but it was, yeah. So, that's a no, but good question. Okay?
Is it in the water yet?
All right. So, is there anything else on, yeah, thank you. Is there anything else on on your radar, anybody? Anybody out there in the audience, big white audience, that you're thinking that the town needs to do? And and, I mean, a lot of groups are gonna take care of things, but we, as a town, what do we have to do? Go ahead, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor Moot. The, I just passed out, and thanks to to Pam, who gave me these yesterday. The Communities in Bloom, one of the recommendations we made was the idea of doing bump outs to kind of green the downtown, and Bob Chipman came across with some concepts. Danny Mackaisik, councillor Mackaisik, made a suggestion, Saritha's on our committee, instead of trying to put a a permanent green in, i.e. like planting, digging up the sidewalk and digging up the roadbed and putting in a proper bed, the difficulty we have under Yarmouth, the reality is that the ground is so pitiful from hundreds of years of whatever happening, nothing's gonna really grow under there. In some communities, what they have done is they have actually taken planters, and they have bought trees or acquired trees, and have put them in seasonally and removed them. So, what you're looking at before you is a movable bump out. In other words, a forklift or some apparatus from the town would actually come move it out in the fall before winter, so it's not gonna impede snow removal. And then, it would then go behind our work shed or in some respective place for storage. The plants would be winterized, so therefore, we could use them year after year, and what you would have is these bump outs that would have foliage in them. It wouldn't be high foliage, naturally, it would be, but it would be green. And one of the recommendations we've been getting from our Communities in Bloom judges is that our downtown is very gray, we don't have a lot of green presence. This concept that Bob Chipman's come up with is is really, I think, worth, that we should be looking at, and Mayor Moot and I talked about it earlier this week, and sharing this with you guys to look at, to see what you think. But I would frankly love to see us, and I know our Communities in Bloom would love to see us, look at even some of these, and I'm not talking just in the downtown core, I'm talking Yarmouth South too. Yarmouth South is probably more gray than any part of the town. And it's it's a neat concept, because it's a movable concept, which means we don't have to necessarily always put them in the same place, it's a matter of moving them. The nice thing about it is, I think, they probably something that could be made locally with Borshin Concrete, probably, or some contractor could do them for us. And the nice part about it is that we'd have this movable foliage in the town as a possibility. So, I just wanted to bring this to your attention today, something for you guys to look at. I won't be a community hold next week, unfortunately, I have another commitment, but I wanted to squeeze it in, and Pam agreed to put it in today, and something we may want to look at. And I have no idea, Jeff, of costing it, and when this committed, Bob give any indication of cost, or is this just a vision of this?
He just dropped them.
He just dropped them off, so we have no idea on on costing of these things, but if if the thought was there to go with it, I know I spoke with councillor Mackaisik last night, he's very supportive of it, he couldn't make it this morning, but it's something I just wanted to throw out to you for consideration.
Go ahead.
And this is something, your Worship, thank you, this is something that was in the Acoustics Plan Two. I know they had a little more, councillor Langel, a little more elaborate planter for the trees, it was almost like a in the ground, huge thing, but I I kind of like this idea because, you know, you don't want to be stuck with the cost of putting a tree in and then doing all the cement work underneath and doing all the piping and everything, and then find out next year that because of plowing or some other reason, you might have put it in the wrong spot, and this is movable. You can make your town look different every year, you can put it in different spots, you can find out where they work and where they don't work, and I think removing them at the end of the year would be a great idea. And I'm, and and I know we, you had a meeting, and I was a little late the other day, I thought it was at 11 o'clock, but it was at 10 with with Minister Churchill, but I wonder if there's any provincial money, I don't know if it's in economic development, tourism, business, for the town of Yarmouth for the ferry coming in, is there any seed money that we can use?
For this?
For for this or any other project?
Yeah.
And and I'm not talking in the millions of dollars, I'm talking probably $100,000 or less, and in the scheme of those guys providing a $30 million subsidy grant, whatever for the boat, I think $100,000 in that whole scheme would probably create a lot of goodwill and do a lot of good work, 'cause I think with Communities in Bloom, the all-hands-on-deck people, I think we could really stretch that money, I think we could do it better than a provincial entity itself. We know where it has to go, and we know what has to be done, and I think if we had a talk with Minister Churchill, and if he passed it on to either Michelle Sampson, Minister of Tourism, or even the premier himself, I think that would go a long ways, and I think that would help us out here in Yarmouth, and and we can do like a joint application with the municipality and the District of Argyle also, so it's not just us, I know we're the gateway in Nova Scotia, and we have to put our best foot forward, it's our only real chance, and and we only get a one good chance to make a first impression, so I think that's something we should bring up with with the minister.
We can do that, I'll.
And I think we're gonna have to have, you know, you'd have have something like this and some other ideas.
Yeah. I I just gotta mention this, 'cause I think we we bounce this around as well, that that when you read the One Nova Scotia report, whether the money's big or small, this this has to stop at at some level, we're gonna ask, that's, I don't mean about this, but but also with regard to, for example, the lights in Frost Park, I've had businesses come up to me and say, Kim, would it be okay if I sponsored a tree? Well, it'd be great if you sponsored a tree, but you have to put your little plaque up, because that's how some businesses, and rightfully so, so we need to do something with that signage bylaw that says, so so I can see, actually, I know a couple of businesses that'll do it already, one whole bump out, they would, because it's movable, and then put the plaque, sponsored by PharmSave, all of them, just joking there, Jim, but sponsored by, in a nice, you know, bronze plaque or something like that, and and it's done, and it doesn't cost, it costs us very little, and they're willing to do that, 'cause the community wants to step up, but but we have to ask, but we have to make room for it to happen in in the first place. Go go ahead.
Yeah, you're dead on the money, and and further to what Phil was saying, we've this morning probably put together very quickly, a bunch of us can put together a nice proposal for for Zach if we wanted to, I mean, this project here, a few dollars for those banners, maybe add to them a bit, because we really didn't have enough for the town, we were kind of stretched low in South and Milton. You put those two chunks in there for starters, and then maybe a little bit of wayfinding, which I know is Jim's committee is working on as well. We could probably very nicely put $100,000 into that, and further to what the mayor was saying, next meeting of our Communities in Bloom in May, in March, we're looking at this whole recommendation back to council for signage, the idea of coming back with a a nice tasteful uniform plaque that can be used to recognize anybody who donates a bench or a tree or whatever, because we're having an awful problem with this off-site signage kind of thing. Well, we've got to change this, I mean, we've got to encourage businesses, there are some business people in this town, God love them, who will donate things unanimously, you know, anonymously, they they don't want to, they don't want any credit, but then, on the other hand, there's some corporate entities that do want to promote the fact that they are good civic-minded citizens, you know, and it's it's a shame when you look at, I'll throw an example, Canadian Tire out, the thousands upon thousands upon thousands of unrecognized dollars that they've given, or Mitch sitting over there with TriStar, same basic idea, they've given thousands upon thousands to the community, yet we oftentimes don't recognize that because of some little foolish regulation. So, if there's some way that we can get around this and encourage people to donate, that's the way to go. We've also looked at, and I believe, Jeff, a charitable donation as well, that you can come and make a donation to the town for for tax purposes, which is something we really should be encouraging as well, that that if somebody could come in and drop, you know, if some estate or individual wants to donate $1,000 to the town of Yarmouth, there's a tax receipt for you, you know what I mean?
We've got that for the all-hands-on-deck, and it's worked.
You've got to have, it makes a big difference, I mean, it really does, so we've got to really work on that one, so so we are working on that with Communities in Bloom, but I really think, I agree with with councillor Mooney, I think we really should get a proposal to Zach, I mean, we just can't go and say, give us 100,000, but if we had a detailed project list, this is what we would like to do, because you've got to bear in mind, this, the first impression of Nova Scotia from those visitors is gonna be us. That is basically it. When those people get off that boat, the first thing they're gonna see is this town, and the last thing we want, thing is, oh my God, what have we just done? You know, we want them to say, wow, what a beautiful province this is, we're looking so forward to seeing the rest of Nova Scotia. And I think that's the message we've got to get out, that we are a beautiful community, and we've got to really work on that beauty, and we're doing it, but I think a proposal, we need a little help, and I think I'm I'm optimistic, I think the problems will help us out a little bit on that regard, with a little bit of creativity, if we can come up with a good project, and I'll volunteer to help graft a project, I mean, I love doing that, and I know.
Do a specific, you want to work with that?
Yeah, do a specific ask, and say, this is what we want, and we've got to be prepared as a town too, to pony a little bit up to sweeten the deal, you know, we'll come in and say, we'll give out so and so and so and so, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's it's a it's a tripartite agreement, it might be something from Macau or two we can get, I don't know, but it's not a big thing, I think we can do a lot in the downtown with, as you say, with civic pride and the merchants all working together, us as a council working with the community as well, to do really neat things on that Main Street, because once we get them through this Main Street, the rest of the town isn't too, isn't too bad, but this little section's a little bumpy, we have to do some work there.
So, you two want to, go ahead, want to do that sooner than later, and?
Yeah, yeah, that's not a problem. And we'll need some help from yourself also, but, you know, it's not.
I'm here.
Okay, the other thing, your Worship, I know we have got.
We have Brittany Churchill.
Yeah.
Why not?
I know the other thing we got in a little trouble over the last week and a half, if you read Facebook at all, is probably subsidizing rents, and one of the thing councillor McCow, or councillor Langel has talked about is some of the storefronts, and I think you said you're gonna have some discussions with some of the landlords and the owners of these properties. I know way back 20 or 25 years ago, I know Derek Lesser and his brother basically paid their way through university, I don't know if you remember, your Worship, the Bongo Hut.
Hello.
They sold, they sold kind of T-shirts, muscle shirts, yeah, shorts, kind of surf supplies in a non-surfing community, and they did quite well for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And I think maybe in the conversation you have with the landlords, I'd like to see some of those businesses occupied from May until Octo, I'd like to see them occupied full-time, but I'd like to see some of those storefronts occupied from May to October, so maybe that might be a conversation you have with some of the landlords, what's the least amount of money that they'll take for their for their property in the summertime? I know there's a lot of things that, if you carried it over into the wintertime, I know with heat and, you know, electricity and some clearance and some other maintenance problems, lack of traffic, that it might not be feasible to do it year-round in some of those kind of seasonal businesses, but it might be opportunity for some of our students. I know the guy, the gentleman from from Acadia University, and his name escapes me, is that East Coast Lifestyle has just absolutely hit the, you know, he's hit four grand slams.
We're aiming for him, for the Entrepreneurs Forum, but we don't, we're not sure yet.
Well, I think, you know, I think that'd be a great opportunity to contact that individual and set up an East Coast Lifestyle. Well, I think, you know, I think that'd be a great opportunity to contact that individual and set up an East Coast Lifestyle booth, store, kiosk in the town of Yarmouth. You know, I think American tourists and Canadians alike will eat that stuff up, right? And that's an opportunity for a student or a small business to get on board and really do something. So, I think that's another conversation we have to have with landlords. You know, Counselor Langel, I know we've talked about the backdrops. You know, we had the 250th Communities in Bloom. I know that avid media had done the work on those. Very successful, professional. And I think if worse comes to worse, I think that could be part of that proposal to talk to the landlords instead of doing maybe the paste over in the window, do a professional backdrop. I know all buildings aren't the same, but I think that should be something that would be included in that. And we have to have an inventory of what's open and available on, you know, from basically probably Albert Street to probably King, I would think.
So, I mean, I agree. The aim, when I talk to them, is to get somebody in those buildings. Even if it's, even if it's your four or five months student business or whatever. Because we need people to be able to walk into those shops.
Yes.
And, yeah, the posters need to, maybe. Okay. So, anything else? I got a list. So, I'll get moving on that. If you guys wanna get moving on that. Because you know what? We really could have those up in record, have them up and done in record time. I'll talk to Zach and we're good to go. Yeah. Anything else? Anything else out there for any questions?
What's the story on this test?
Well. Yeah, no, I was supposed to get, I was gonna get Mike to send in a letter to present to council.
Because we used to do, going back way back when, I mean, you don't need a lot of bells and whistles for that. And you don't need a lot of expense. I'm going, dating myself and Jim will remember in our younger years. But we used to make a big do out of the Blue Nose first coming into town. We used to make a big do with the Scotia Prince coming, the first voyage over. It wasn't, it was no receptions, it was no fanfare. But what we did make a point of is letting the schools know when the kids were there. Letting the public know when there was a big public to do. The mayor said a few good words and maybe a dignitary or two. But I mean, we should be looking at, for example, now, I would suggest we should get a letter off to the premier. Getting the premier now here at the very least to welcome that boat.
Yeah, we need the exact date. And as.
And we don't know that. Yeah, it's nebulous, but. But I think we should put him on alert, that we really, I mean, if nothing else, we gotta have him here to be on alert saying, hey, we want your presence here if at all possible. We really would like to have a real good showing for this thing. You know, maybe something with the Yarmouth Citizens Band, for example, who would probably come and play like Oh Canada or something like that, which would be nice. Anything along that line. We don't need a lot of oomph here. I mean, people are basically gonna come off the boat and they're gonna hit the road. But the trick is, is we wanna have that good, strong, positive family presence is what we need.
Yeah. Do you want, if you want Mike to come in and show us what he has, which was my suggestion to him. Because they've got some good stuff. They've got some good stuff. I encouraged them at their last meeting, I said, you need to, you know, me, to find donations, find a way to make it happen. But if they have to come to us, we did say that, I think at the last budget meeting, we were gonna need a little bit of funds to do things. So, he may need $10. He may need a thousand. I don't know. So, do you want him, I'll entertain that motion for him to come in. Okay. Yeah, okay. So, so moved for Mike Mooney or designate to come in on the events committee. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, good. Yeah, they've got a ton of stuff on their list. I should probably be better.
Just to put it on the books, I'd like to make a motion too, that we direct staff to get some costing on these bump outs as soon as they possibly can. It's a possibility as well, like the actual cost of these things. Because Phil and I are gonna need that for a proposal if we're gonna do it to Zach. I got a ballpark figure, but I feel much, feel much more comfortable.
That's not a concrete slab, is it?
No.
That's a wooden?
No, they're composite, composite concrete.
The slab?
Yes, yeah. They're composite concrete. Yeah, it's composite concrete with Folly Lake aggregate. So, you've got a concrete slab with a wire base inside, concrete with holes in place that it can lift. Literally, it's in three sections. So, it would be lifted up by a forklift or something similar to that. Loaded on a truck nicely stacked. And then the actual pots, I believe, are affixed right to it. So, they'd be like a separate unit. You'd be able to stack for storage purposes in the winter in a fairly warm location somewhere. But the others could be stacked one upon the other. But the five or six, whatever number we decide to go for bump outs would be there. But it'd be nice to get an estimate from somebody from Borshardt or whoever, how much these things would cost, you know. And they may be cost prohibitive. I don't know. It's just a concept at this point. Folly Lake might be able to do it. We just need a budget to this point, Jeff. That's all we need. Yeah, just a rough idea how much we need. Because when Phil and I, because I'd like to have Pam have this thing to Zach ready for Monday or Tuesday. I hate, I hate, I'm one of these ones, let's get her done. You know what I mean? So, if we even got a ballpark from Jeff or Dave saying, well, it would roughly be in this area, that's all we need, you know. Now, Bob may have a price already when he did these. I suspect he may, but I'm not sure.
They just gotta look nice. I mean, we've seen concrete. No. Okay, so, the motion's on the floor for staff to look at that. Who seconded that? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Anything else? Good. Well, that was easy. Well, now the work starts. Okay. Motion to adjourn.